All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing to receive comments from all interested individuals regarding the adoption of regulations that pertain to Chapter 439 of the Nevada Administrative Code, or NAC. My name is Melinda Southard, and I am a Deputy Administrator with the Division of Healthcare Financing and Policy, and will be facilitating today's public hearings. The notice for this public hearing was published on September 30th, 2024, in accordance with Nevada Revised Statute 422.2369. Representing the Division is our Administrator Stacy Lee and our Senior Deputy Attorney General Lauren Driscoll. Before we get started, I'd like to go over some general housekeeping rules and expectations. As a reminder, today's meeting is being recorded. Please refrain from putting the meeting on hold, but please do mute yourself to avoid disruption. To participate in today's workshop or provide public comment by telephone, you may join the meeting by dialing 775-321-611. And when prompted to provide the meeting ID, enter 124-857-871. You may then press *5 to raise your hand during the public comment periods to provide your feedback and comments. Individuals making comments will be asked to first begin by stating their full name and organization for the record, and if you could, please spell your last name. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. The first item on the agenda is public comment on any topic. So again, if you are calling in telephonically, you may press *5 to raise your hand, and if you're joining us from teams, please use the raise hand feature to take your place in the queue. And of course, if you are in person, just let me know, and I can call in. So with that, we'll get started with a public comment. To call for any public comment, please raise your hand.
We...
Oh, sorry. We'll go ahead with public comment in the room first.
Just a quick question. Will you be doing public comment again after the...
Yeah.
Okay.
So we will be doing public comment right now as on any topic. Then we will do the presentation, then we'll have public comment and presentation, and then at the end again.
There we go.
Okay. All right. So with that, we do have Michael Gagnon. Your hand is raised. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Melinda. Michael Gagnon, Executive Director of Healthy Nevada, and one of the members of the Electronic Health Information Advisory Group, which helped draft the regulation. Last name spelled G-A-G-N-O-N. My comment is that the proposed regulation revised by LCB has a major change, which does not meet what was submitted to them by the director or as agreed upon by the Electronic Health Information Advisory Group, and I think now does not meet the requirements for sharing data, specifically under Section 4.1A in the current proposed regulation. It says maintains an electronic health record system which meets the requirements of Section 5 of this regulation, and then goes on to talk about connection to the Health Information Exchange. But the original language and talked about at the Electronic Health Information Advisory Group read as follows: Maintain an electronic health record system pursuant to NAC 4395576, subsection 2, and install and implement components or services for exchanging data. This is a crucial change, because when we talked about it at the Electronic Health Information Advisory Group, those are not just parts of a standard electronic health record. You have to add those components that allow for the exchange of data, for managing opt-in consent, and for patient access to their medical records and forwarding. Those are not necessarily just when you get an electronic health record, you by their nature have those. So I think that needs to be changed back to the original language, because we have lost a key component of that. In addition, that's not recommended, nothing in Section 5, which is made reference to in the new regulation, proposed regulation, does it mention that specific capability? And I think we need to go back to what was originally submitted by the director and recommended by Electronic Health Information Advisory Group to add those back in, and I think those are crucially important to the exchange of information.
Thank you. Thank you, St. Agan. Thank you for your public comments. We'll take that into consideration. Do we have any further public comments on any topic? Please feel free to raise your hand, or if you're calling in, you can press *5 to raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we will proceed with the... All right. So the second item on the agenda is review proposed regulations, R173-24, NAC Chapter 439. For immediate access to the document, please see the posted meeting materials on the Division's Public Notices webpage, where the agenda is also located. And I can also post a link in the chat, one moment, for you to access that document. So I'm going to start by, let's see. So the proposed regulations provide provisions for the following: A framework for the electronic maintenance, transmittal, and exchange of electronic health records, prescriptions, health-related information, and electronic signatures, and requirements for electronic equivalence of written entries or written approvals in accordance with federal law; standards that require the use of networks and technologies that allow patients to access electronic health records directly from the healthcare provider of the patient, and forward such electronic health records electronically to other persons and entities; and the interoperability of such networks and technologies in accordance with the applicable standards for the interoperability of qualified health information networks prescribed by the Office of the National Coordinator for Health Information Technology of the United States Department of Health and Human Services. The effective date of change is upon approval by the Nevada Legislative Commission. I will now be providing a brief overview of the proposed regulations. And in clarification before we begin, these regulations do not require the use of a health information exchange by any provider of health care or medical facility. These regulations do not require the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services to contract with a health information exchange. These regulations do, however, require that both a health information exchange and an electronic health record system, or EHR, allow patients to access electronic health records directly from the healthcare provider of the patient, and forward such electronic health records electronically to other persons and entities as directed through Assembly Bill 7. If an electronic health information exchange or an EHR system does not meet all the interoperability, federal alignment, and direct patient access requirements prescribed by Assembly Bill 7 and through this proposed regulation, such an electronic health information exchange, or EHR, would not be a viable option to providers of health care and medical facilities for compliance. The Electronic Health Information Advisory Group, charged with advising the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services on the regulations before you today, declined to require any one-size-fits-all solution, but rather to allow for two options for compliance, as long as both of those options met all requirements for interoperability, security, and patient access as prescribed through AB7. Lastly, for those concerned about compliance and an opportunity to request exemption through a waiver, it is outlined in AB7, Section 1.08, subsection 6. In the coming weeks, the Division will be transparent in its process to develop the waiver application, providing opportunity for public comment, input, and engagement through a public workshop, which will be announced through the Division's normal public meeting notice process. We encourage and welcome your input in the waiver process, and we plan to finalize and publish the waiver application before the start of 2025. So now we'll begin with the overview of the proposed regulations. I'm going to share my screen. All right, you all should be able to see that. Apologize for my scrolling. Okay, so Sections 2 and 3: Identify existing definitions and with the adoption of a new term for electronic health record system, to mean technology that has the ability to securely maintain, transmit, and exchange electronic health information, and makes protected health information instantly and securely available to authorized users. Section 4 provides that a healthcare provider is deemed to satisfy such requirements if the healthcare provider maintains an electronic health record system which meets the requirements of Section 5 of this regulation, or connects with a health information exchange which meets the requirements set forth in existing law and regulations for the opportunity for the operation of a health information exchange. This section additionally requires an application for a waiver to meet certain requirements and provides the process for the department to consider such an application. Section 5 stipulates the requirements for the operation and functionality of an electronic health record system, in that the electronic health record system must be certified by the Office of the National Coordinator for Health Information Technology of the United States Department of Health and Human Services, also known as the ONC, comply with all requirements governing the exchange, security, and disclosure of electronic health records, health-related information, and related data prescribed in the High Tech Act and HIPAA, as well as any other applicable federal or state law and social regulation. Securely exchange, integrate, or cooperatively use electronic health information with other electronic health record systems in compliance with any applicable standards for the interoperability of health information prescribed by the federal government, including any applicable standards for the interoperability of QHINs, or Qualified Health Information Networks, prescribed and designated by the ONC. Provide for the electronic transmission of prior authorizations for prescription medication, and adhere to nationally recognized best practices for secure maintenance, transmission, and exchange of electronic health information. Section 6 clarifies that these regulations in no way should be construed or interpreted to require any person or entity to use a health information exchange, meaning these regulations do not require anyone to use a health information exchange. Section 8 additionally requires a health information exchange operating in this state to be a member of TEFA or the Trusted Exchange Framework and Common Agreement, and meet certain operational requirements. Sections 9 and 10 provide an exception to those restrictions on the use of a health information exchange if the patient or his or her legal representative consents to such use, or the use is otherwise required or authorized by existing law. Any language that was omitted or revised between the initial regulations presented during the September 4th public workshop and the proposed regulations presented today is to remove redundancies and clarify language in alignment with existing regulatory language. We will now move on to the third item on the agenda, which is public comment on the subject matter. If you would like to give public comments and are joining us virtually, please use the raise hand feature to take your place in the queue to be called upon. And as a reminder, for those of us joining by telephone, please press *5 to raise your hand and be placed in the queue. And then, of course, you can raise your hand. So we will go ahead with public comment in the room.
Thank you. My name is Robert Fiegler. I'm a concierge physician in Carson City. I have a small practice of about 160 patients. And my concern is that I agree with the ideas. The interoperability, the security, the patient access are things that I currently do without an electronic health record and without a health information exchange. And I think this law would put an undue burden on people, myself and other people who have small practices that do not bill insurance, do not take Medicare, do not take Medicaid, work completely as a fee-for-service practice. And what I'm hoping for is that there are some flexibilities for small practices through the waiver process that could be afforded to people who would find this to be harmful to the existence of my ongoing practice. And I'm not sure I have much more else to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Yes, please, go ahead.
Hi, it's Emily and Ken Gray for the record. I just want to reiterate what Dr. Fiegler had said. And since our last meeting, I've also met with some of the folks at the Nevada Medical Association at a mixer, and had brought this up in that group. And I got to tell you, the reception was kind of cold. A few of the docs pulled me aside later, and a couple of them were older, and they just said they'll fold up the practice. They, you know, they're not, you know, and I think that's counterproductive. You know, if they can't get a waiver, that's counterproductive. But what we want to do is a state with making sure everybody has access to care, not access to medical records, but access to care, as well as a couple of other younger folks that said, you know, they just won't be able to afford it because of the ongoing maintenance fees and upgrades and everything else. So I really think we need to take a long, hard look at this. And, you know, when you start looking at the definition of healthcare providers, you know, a music therapist, things like, I mean, they're never going to be at a point where they're going to be able to afford to implement something like this. So I think we, like I said, I would really, really encourage you guys to take a long, hard look at, you know, a pretty wide-reaching exemption for folks' waiver process, so we don't do exactly the opposite of what we're trying to do, you know, in the state as a whole, and that's get healthcare providers to, you know, pack it up. I mean, we need everyone we can get.
Yeah. Thank you for your public comment. All right. And then we'll go online. So I see Maya Holmes, you have your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Hi, good morning. Yes, this is Maya Holmes, H-O-L-M-E-S. I'm the Health Policy Director for the Culinary Health Fund. We submitted public comment, a public comment letter for the September 4th, 2024 public workshop, stating some of our concerns, including some that we voiced at the meeting, and also at that June Electronic Health Information Advisory Group meeting over the proposed regulations. And I just resubmitted that letter this morning. We closely followed AB7 through the Patient Protection Commission and the legislative session, and we also provided testimony. We believe the proposed regulations exceed the department's scope of authority established by the statute. The proposed regulations indicate that compliance for providers is based on either maintaining an electronic health record system that meets specified interoperability standards, or by maintaining a connection with a health information exchange. We believe this conflicts with the provisions of Section 108 in AB7 and the legislative intent, which prescribed the ability for patients to directly access their records from their provider. The intent of AB7 was patient access and control of their health information by ensuring patients have that direct access to their electronic data, not to permit provider compliance through connection to an HIE. We cannot find any indication that the current HIE in the state provides patient access to their own records. And additionally, patients should never have to sign a global consent with an HIE to access their records, or if they only want to forward their records to certain providers. The entire bill was intended to support interoperability based on national standards and patient access directly from their providers. And the HIE inclusion is the opposite. This regulation is locking in more layers between patients and their doctors, and data controlled by a private HIE that has attempted to mandate that both patients and providers must opt out of sending private health information to it. The regulation adds a new layer between patients and their doctors, and this is exactly what AB7 was designed to avoid. AB7, the statute, it did not have a provision stating that providers can use an HIE connection to be compliant. So we've, you know, we've raised this before, but we still fail to understand why the regulations are including that. And we don't believe that the regulations are consistent with the statute, and we think they should not move forward as is. AB7 does include waivers for providers who do not have the infrastructure to comply and funding to assist those that would like to participate. And we were respectfully asked that these regulations be revised or rejected, as they have inserted the HIE into the law inappropriately. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Do you have any other public comments online? Please use the raise hand feature or press *5. I do see a caller with their hand raised with last four digits of the phone number of 2004. Caller, please go ahead. Caller, if you can press *6 on your phone, it should help you unmute.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
This is Jim Willis speaking. I'm the National System Leader for Interoperability for Common Spirit Health, formerly Dignity Health. We have St. Rose Hospitals and a large provider community there in the state of Nevada. A concern that we have is based on AB7, all of the national standard networks, so eHealth Exchange, Commonwealth, care quality are all now considered. Health information exchanges by law, as it defines any network that connects these disparate systems. It also requires that HIES get state certifications and manage informed consent. As I understand it, there are currently no national networks that are certified, so we find that concerning. We also believe that there may be challenges with managing consent in certain provider groups across the state. So we support the regulation in the sense that we do not feel that the Healthy Nevada HIE should be excluded, and that it could have negative implications on interoperability.
Thank you for your public comment. Do we have any additional public comments? Let's see, I do see Michael Gagnon. Do you have your hand raised? Please go ahead.
Yeah, Michael Gagnon, again, with Health in Nevada, the only certified HIE in the state. The way the statute is written, Jim is correct, all health information exchanges, all national networks would become health information exchanges by definition. That means they would have to be certified by the state. That means they would also have to comply with our rules around opt-in consent. And none of the national networks, according to their data use and reciprocal service agreements, do that function. That means that the function for maintaining consent to release information to others would now need to be managed by all the hospitals, all the provider groups, and anyone connected to a national network. This is the side effect you get when you let organizations create regulations that don't understand the nature of what they're proposing. And the Electronic Health Information Advisory Group attempted to fix that issue by allowing for a health information exchange in the state to manage the consent on behalf of everyone else, allowing any participant, any member in the, any healthcare provider in the state, to be a sub-participant of an HIE in order to connect to a national network, and let the HIE manage the consent requirements. They are significant, and they will result in all Nevada data not being accessible to anyone else in the entire state or outside the state if we propose it as is. These are some of the side effects of this law, that we need to understand, that this needs to have a centralized managed method if we're going to continue to have opt-in. This is not opt-in to go get information from another network. This is opt-in to release information to another network. That's the way it works nationally. That's the way the national networks work. They do not manage specialized consent on a state-by-state basis. And so we need a mechanism to do that. That's what the Electronic Health Information Advisory Group tried to fix with this. The other thing I want to mention is that the whole concept of having the patient be the only one that can manage their records and push them is also, will not serve underserved populations. It will not serve those who don't have clinical access, who are elderly. It's going to result in very negative consequences to some of our most underserved communities in the state. And we can't allow that to be the only way. Effectively, if done by the original proposed language, this would be a provider to patient to other provider, and the only way to send that information. We need a way to send information between providers, and also to the patient. And that's what's being proposed in the regulation that the Electronic Health Information Advisory Group tried to fix some of the issues that would have greatly limited interoperability in the state. And I believe we have done the best we can. There's more to do, I believe. But I believe we fixed a lot of the issues that would have limited interoperability. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And I just want to verify, I do have a hand raised from a caller with the last four numbers of 2004. Caller, please go ahead.
Yes, sorry, and to *6 again. This is Jim Willis again, and to the same point Michael is making there, and to the point of the certification by the state for what are now considered HIES under AB7. If Common Spirit Health, the organization that I represent, were to disable our connections to Commonwealth and Care Quality via our primary EHR, which is Cerner, due to them not being certified by the state, that would essentially require us to stop data sharing in the state of Nevada.
Thank you for your public comment. Do we have any additional public comments? Okay, seeing none. We would like to move on to the fourth agenda item. For possible action, adoption of proposed regulations, LTV File Number R133-24, NAC Chapter 439, would like to turn it over to our administrator for a comment on this action item.
Thank you, Melinda. So I will be honest, this is a tough one today. I will just be frank. I think if the legislature wants to be more clear, so we have a better, easier job of implementing their statute, I really would, I think we need to approve this today and send it back to them. LCB made these changes. We've done the best we can to implement this. But that's all we can do at administrative role. And if the legislature disagrees, they need to be more clear in their statutes. So I will approve today. But if people are not happy, we have a legislative statute on the hills. Today, we will work on getting the waiver approval, or the waiver process underway, so people are not, you know, in a bind until then. But I just, I'm frustrated that we cannot come to an agreement about what the law says. And that's when I feel like the legislature needs to go back and clarify that for us. So I will approve today on that.
Great. Thank you, Administrator Weeks. Next on the agenda is item for general public comments. Does anyone have any general public comments they would like to share at this time? And caller number with the last four digits of 2004, I see your hand is still raised. Do you have additional public comment or no? Sorry.
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional public comment either in the room or online? Yes, please go ahead.
Ken Gray for the record again, it's Emily and Ken Gray, G-R-A-Y. You know, I would highly, you know, highly encourage you not to adopt today. And Stacy hit it right on the head. You know, legislative intent, the legislative intent was to provide, you know, looking at the bigger picture, for, you know, patients to have access to their records. But just by the mere overreach of providers, you know, meeting the requirement of the HIE, you know, considering, and then, you know, that doesn't do anything with the patient accessing their records. I think that's, I think that's overreach. And in light of the recent Chevron decision, this could be challenged just on its face.
I hear that, but the statute doesn't read that way around patient access. It is not clear to us, and that is the problem.
I'm not disagreeing. I've been a...
I know.
I'm a huge proponent of writing the law for what you want it to be, and not having to, you know, throw the burdensome process of creating regulations on agencies. So I hear it, and I apologize on behalf of the body.
I don't want you to have to do that. I mean, the other piece, I don't know, I'm probably speaking. Gabe, if I'm talking too much, tell me to be quiet. It's a public hearing. Is that okay?
It's Lauren.
Oh, Lauren, tell me if I'm talking too much. Oh, Lauren, tell me if I'm talking too much.
Well, Stacy, I'll jump in and say that we are going to be responding to comments that we've received today in writing. So we'll be able to provide those responses, Stacy, in that manner. And then also as part of our review process here, the Legislative Commission will receive information on all the comments that we received and the feedback that we received here today as well. So that will all be part of a finalization process through the Legislative Commission.
Lauren, do we have time for session to come back after you guys have analyzed the LCB changes and some of these comments? So we can review the legal side of this more. And do we have time to do that before session? Or is this the last stop here? I believe it still has to go in front of the Legislative Commission to be finally adopted. So there's still one more step, and there's still public comment in that step. So this isn't like it's adopted today.
Okay. Hey, Stacy, this, this is Gabe. I'm listening. I think Lauren, I think we lost her for one second. But yeah, this is not the final, final step, although it's the final step for you. You've, you've adopted it. But from here, it will go to LCB. LCB with their analysis, they'll have access to all of the comments, all of the written information that is submitted to them. If they need to make changes to make sure that this law fits and does what it's intended to do, they absolutely will do that. But as far as this meeting, we won't have another one of these.
Okay, well, that helps, Gabe. So I think we put it back on their, their turf and let them grapple with the chain, the issues that we're facing and that the statute, the way it's drafted.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And for coming in person.
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the last item of adjournment. So the hearing on the adoption of regulations that pertain to chapter 439 of the Nevada Administrative Code is now closed, and this public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and participation today. Thank you.
Thank you.